That's a good question. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Wonderful to hear your voice, AJ. I hope you are well, man. Yo, this is President Hershey. I am now calling the board special meeting to order at 4:30 2:00 PM. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands of the Puget Sound Coast Alish people. For the record, I will call the role Director Hampson.
Here.
Director Harris will not be joining us this evening. Director Rankin.
Here.
Director Rivera Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Director Sargeau.
Present.
Director Song Maritz.
Here.
And this is Director Hershey. We're holding today's meeting in a hybrid format with director, staff, and members of the public here in person with remote access also available via Microsoft Teams and phone. Consistent with the governor's proclamation on open public meetings, the public is being provided remote access today via Microsoft Teams and phone. Because we also have some joining us remotely, I'll remind everyone on the phone or Teams to please remain muted when you are not speaking. There will not be a public comment opportunity. Also, for those directors and staff in person, please mute your microphone when you are not speaking. Please also leave microphones in their stands and speak directly into them when you are speaking to ensure those joining us remotely can hear us. We are joined today by Superintendent Dr. Brent Jones, as well as AJ Crable from the Council of Great City Schools, who will be leading us through a training on progress monitoring. This is the first of a series of trainings to align board practices with student outcomes focused governance. The training will include a simulation of a progress monitoring session and review of a progress monitoring memo prepared by staff. Please note that the student data in the materials are artificial and are not for, or excuse me, and are for training purposes only. Let me say that again. The data in the materials are artificial and for training purposes only. I will now hand it over to AJ Crable to begin our training.
It is a joy to be with you all. Thank you for having me. So first, to follow up with what the board chair described, why would the board do this? And to be clear about that, you have to start with what actually causes improvements in student outcomes? And what causes that is the connection between the magic of what happens between the educator you know, and the student, that when those two, you know, are together, that there, there's something happens there, that the gifts that the educator has are shared with the students and learning, you know, blossoms. But so to understand why a board would monitor, you have to understand what impact could the board monitoring student performance possibly have on the quality of the interaction between the educator and the learner? Like, how could the board's actions possibly help teachers be more effective and help learners learn? So the, the basic understanding that gets you there is that this is always a continuous improvement process. That when teachers, you know, sit down to teach little AJ, they've got a plan, they've got a passion, and they share that with little AJ. And sometimes it works on the first time, and sometimes it doesn't. And what the teacher does is, you know, they, they look at what little AJ can do, and they figure out, okay, well, so they didn't quite get everything that I taught, so I'm going to reteach these pieces. I'm going to kind of pivot and adjust, and then I'm going to reteach again, you know, until little AJ gets it. And if, and if that doesn't work out, that's fine. I'll just pivot and adjust again until little AJ gets it. And so this, this is the nature of how, of how children learn, is that they, they're served by teachers who are never going to give up them, who are constantly teaching, looking at the data, figuring out what worked, what didn't work, and then making that pivot, and then teaching again. Such is the nature of educators. They're relentless in their passion about what's possible for children. And so because of that passion, they engage in this continuous improvement process. You try it out, you know, check the data, figure out how do we adjust, and try it out again. That is what a culture of continuous improvement looks like in practice in the classroom. And that's why what teachers do is such a blessing to students, because they're constantly looking at the data, adapting, you know, and trying again. What happens in the boardroom begins to create the culture of what is more likely to happen in the classroom. The more the board behaves in a particular way, the more they silently give permission to everyone throughout the organization to behave in the same way. If the board wants to create a culture that really nourishes and values continuous improvement, one of the board's access to that is to publicly engage in that exact same process that they'd want teachers engaged in, of constantly looking, you know, being clear about what the expectations are, that would be the goals, and then constantly looking at the data, figuring out, okay, what's working, what's not working, identifying, okay, where do we need to pivot? We, we tried this strategy, and that wasn't very helpful to our teachers. Okay, so let's try a different strategy instead. What we learned is that didn't work, so that's not a bad thing. It just means we got to pivot, and then try again, and then pivot and try again. And so the same culture of continuous improvement that the board wants to see happen in the classroom, its access to creating that as a cultural norm is to engage in that exact same behavior in the boardroom. Thus, we have the board engaged in monitoring progress, you know, and trying to get to a point where the board is increasingly spending half of their time each month monitoring progress relative to the goals that they've set for student outcomes. That brings us to this evening, as we, that, that being the purpose of monitoring. We want to do three things this evening. The first thing that we're going to do is we're going to actually dive into, okay, what does effective monitoring look like, and why would we do it? The second thing we'll do is we'll actually do a quick role play of what does it actually feel like to monitor, give board members opportunity to practice their skills. We're going to, you know, ask Jones to role play as the superintendent for this particular activity. I hope you can pull that off. And then after we've done the role play, then we'll take a moment to evaluate. The board will take a moment to self-evaluate, how effective were we at engaging in this monitoring work? How effective were we engaging in behavior that's really going to create the type of cultural norms that we want to see? How effective were we at leading by example? So that's the agenda, those three parts. And conveniently, they occur on three pages in your handout, so that you should have a handout in front of you labeled progress monitoring student outcomes. Can I get a thumbs up if somebody has that? Okay, excellent. So what we'll do then is there are three sections on that first page. The first one is what is monitoring? Take a moment and just read that first section, what is monitoring? We'll come back later to how is monitoring beneficial and tips for effective monitoring. But take just a quick moment and refresh in your mind what is monitoring, then we'll talk about it right quick. So now that you have an opportunity to look over that first section, what's something about that first section, the section of what is monitoring, the most jumped out of, what's something in that section that most resonated for you? Who'd be the first to share? Yeah, go for it.
Okay. One of the things that really jumped out to me was the second bullet. If the answer to only one or two of those questions is yes, the board may opt to table the matter. What I think is critical about that is, in the past, even though we haven't gotten probably whole answers or clear understanding of where we're at, we have just moved on. We've had the work session, and we have just kept chugging along, hoping that more information and clarity would come. And so what's really exciting about this, and what I think is going to be a big change for our system, is the idea that we're going to either table it, or in my opinion, probably just hold off and really figure out what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. What you don't want to do is create a culture of where we step over things and just move on without really addressing them one way or the other. We really want to be definitive. Either we have something in place where we can win for our students, or we are not in a position to win. But if we're not clear which of those poles we're at, then certainly the most likely appropriate thing to do is to pause and really challenge the superintendent to bring more clear information forward, so the board can clearly understand, are we winning right now for students? Are we on track, you know, or are we not? Who else? What's something in that first section that jumped out at you?
I would like to actually just add on to what Director Hershey said in that there is a direct corollary in the classroom when our teachers move our students forward without making sure that they've learned the materials so that they can meet the goal without, or the, the, the goal without the outcome of the students actually knowing the information and knowing how the, and having the skill. And so I think that that's particularly important as well. And then the, I appreciate the, I highlighted in this starting paragraph, this second sentence about describing when it becomes problematic versus when it becomes catastrophic. Problematic when there's no evidence of student growth, and then catastrophic if the superintendent hasn't sufficiently, doesn't sufficiently have aggressive strategies in place for increasing growth.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. What jumped out at you?
Go ahead, Director Rankin.
Thank you. Hi, AJ. I, what stood out to me was right at the beginning that progress monitoring, monitoring is a conversation between the school board and superintendent.
Yes, it is.
That it's, it's, you know, I think a lot of times in the, in the, in the past, or just anyway, I'll just say, a lot of times, work sessions around different topics have felt kind of presentational, or a little bit of, what's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, one, one-way presentation without really the expectation that it's a conversation. It's either school board members kind of expounding whatever from the dais, or superintendent or staff presenting a slide deck. And then the actual digging into, was that meaningful or not? Or how is this supporting our shared goals or not? Doesn't take place.
Yeah, the thing that I pointed out about that is monitoring in the boardroom is a form of formative evaluation of the superintendent. And so what monitoring is not is an opportunity to hear what the entire staff knows. As much as it is an opportunity for the board to get some clarity, is our chief, chief executive, is our chief educational officer? Do they have a strong grasp on what is true, what is happening for our students? And, and is able to, from that grasp, lead our school system? Or do they not have a grasp of what is going on in our school system? Like, but as a board, you want to know that. Because if they're not in a position, if they don't, if the superintendent doesn't understand what's happening for students, then they are not really in a position to be making the types of decisions that you need a superintendent to make. And so that's part of why it's, it's a conversation, and that it's not, you know, the dog and pony show type situation. That's why you don't see any PowerPoints being shown. Like, it's a, we're looking at the data, we're having a conversation. But that's also why it's strictly between the superintendent and the board, because this, the board needs to know, is our superintendent positioned to lead? Do they, do they have a basic understanding of the things they need to know about what is true for our students?
Director Sargeau.
Thank you. This is Director Sargeau, African-American. I'm wearing all purple today, for those who may not be able to see me from the glasses to the shoes. What I, what stood out to me is that this centers children and holds adults accountable.
Amen.
That's what we need to be doing. We always need to be centering children and holding all of us adults who are responsible for these children accountable for doing our part, whatever that part is.
That's right.
I wanted to really highlight something that Director Rankin said around the conversation and the frequency that we have these, these chats. Because sometimes we've been in situations, because of the size of our district, that before we have a work session, superintendents are often briefed, right? And then that is the information that they know about the topic. What I think is going to be critical here, and what I really love about this structure, is that this is a, seems like a pretty frequent conversation that we're having, and it demands that the system pay attention to it as a part of our everyday operation, as opposed to in the past, where we've gotten specific updates maybe once or twice a year. By the time we've gotten the update, the information has already gone out of the other ear for directors. There's not a really great place where it lives. And really making this, the focus of what we do, especially in the public face, is critical. Critical. So I'm super excited. One quick question that I had, and maybe we'll get into this a little bit later, is that I didn't really see the frequent, the appropriate frequency at which we should be having these conversations with the superintendent. Is there a best practice for that?
Yeah, so ideally, the board is going to be spending half of its time each month engaged in conversations where you're monitoring progress. And then the, the idea being that the other half of your time, you're then making decisions grounded in what you learned during this time. Like, the, the board making decisions absent having a deep understanding of what is true for your students is just as foolish as a superintendent making decisions absent a deep understanding of what's true for your students. And so the idea is that you'll spend half of your time each month really getting deep into the data about student performance relative to your goals, and the other half of your time doing all the other business that a board needs to do. And so one of the next steps that I'm engaging with your staff around now, is we've got to create a calendar, a monitoring calendar. It's, it's the board's calendar, so it'll be brought to you offer your consideration, but we generally draft it with the staff since they know when data becomes available. And so I'm working with your staff, we'll draft a monitoring calendar, bring that back to you, but it'll show exactly each month which of your goals will be monitored, which slices of your goals will be monitored each month, every month, ideally for the next, you know, thirty-six to forty-eight months, so that there's no questions, you know, exactly what's happening month to month, there's no gotcha, it's all out in the open. And anyone who's curious, hey, when are we going to get on this topic? Well, look at the calendar, it says we're going to get on that in September. When are we going to get in this topic? Well, it says we're going to do that in April. And so you will have a calendar that will drive, that will drive that behavior of exactly what will be monitored on which month. But the idea is twelve months out of twelve, we care about our children, so twelve months out of twelve, we're looking at what's real for our children.
Directors, before we move on? All right, thank you. Please continue, AJ.
So that's the first section. So the next section is how is, anyone else want to be heard on this first section before we move on? So the next section is how is monitoring beneficial? So take a moment and look at that section, and then we'll talk about it. So who will be the first to share? Which one of the items around how is monitoring beneficial the most resonated for you? Yeah?
What stood out to me is this line here, the report should include how the superintendent will respond to the data if things are slightly off track. What I'm kind of reflecting on is that the superintendent who owns the strategy, not the board. And it makes it really clear who owns.
Yeah, one thing that is commonly messy about monitoring is that boards will think this is the occasion for which I can tell the superintendent which strategy we should use. And that's actually not the case. A similar but different mistake is people look, well, this is the occasion which I'll tell the superintendent whether I, you know, like or dislike the strategies that the superintendent plans to use. And that's also not actually the point of monitoring. It is, however, the point of monitoring that you should leave a monitoring conversation with crystal clarity on what the strategies are that the superintendent intends to use, because you have a right to know as a board, does my employee have a plan for my children? Because folks who don't have a plan have planned to fail. And so you want to know, does the superintendent have a plan? And does it seem to be sufficiently aggressive to be an adequate response to whatever the reality is our students are currently facing? Anyone else? What jumped out at you in terms of how monitoring might be beneficial? Yeah?
Thank you. Yeah, I think following up on, on, um, Director Sam Maritz's comment there, further it says that if the data says that performance is completely off track, the superintendent's strategy should reflect the urgency that the current reality demands. I think that's a very intentional wording, because when it is completely off track, clearly we are at a point where things need to be corrected urgently, and you get to expect that the superintendent will have a strategy that reflects that urgency.
Yeah. If where we, if we expect to be at eighty percent by this point in the cycle, and we're at seventy-nine percent, and then I would expect the superintendent to have some corrective actions, but, you know, corrections that are, you know, kind of reasonably, you know, placid. But if we expect to be at eighty percent, and we're currently at sixty percent, I expect the superintendent to be talking about how we are making radical shifts in resource allocation. The single most important resource that a school system has at its disposal is its educating force. You know, it's, you know, the talented staff. And so that's the question is, you know, what, what is the plan to deploy those resources in a way that's going to bridge the massive gulf? And so that's one of the things you are definitely looking for in the, in the monitoring is, you know, what is the level of severity that the data suggests? And does the superintendent reveal the strategy that seems to match that? Anyone else? How is monitoring beneficial? Yeah?
Immediately after. What I, what I'm really finding beneficial about this whole document is that we've gotten questions about what is, what is student-focused outcomes governance? And all I've been able to say is it's what students know and what they can do. But in addition to our goals and guardrails, obviously. But what I really love about this document is that this is something that we can take out into community and really not sell, but educate our, our constituents about what does this look like for the board, right? What does this look like for our system? I think another critical piece there, and this is something that Chandra mentioned earlier, excuse me, Director, Vice President Hampson, is that this gives us an opportunity to model what is essentially rapid cycle evaluation
That's right.
like for our district, and how it should look as well in classrooms. So just something to chew on for board directors as you're, as you're having community conversations about how this might be useful. Director Rankin.
Thank you. Yeah, concur with that for sure. This is really helpful layout, and I think it will help make clear to the community that this isn't just like a fun exercise that we're doing as a group. It's actually critical to the work that we're doing for their students. The bits that I sort of underline that jumped out from this second chunk for me are board behavior sets the culture for an institution. If board members want a culture where teachers are open and reflective in their craft, they set the stage for that by demonstrating what that looks like. And then also, this is a powerful tool for creating organizational alignment. I think that these things are really critical. And when we are sitting here, it feels very, very far away from the classroom. And, and I know that, you know, there are times where I, I have been frustrated that, you know, I'll hear something bubble up from a school or something and, and think like, well, we just talked about that last week. How come nobody else ever talking about that? Which isn't their job. It's not their job to, to tune into all of these meetings and everything. But thinking about how, rather than, I mean, thinking about for myself, rather than be frustrated that every little piece of information isn't finding its way directly, directly through the whole system, to think about modeling and culture and how the impact that we have from up here is maybe not that instant information granular thing, but it's also not, not impactful. And I'm particularly reflecting about wanting a culture where, where teachers are open and reflective, and I would say not, not just teachers, but administrators and staff as well. You know, we want a culture where it's okay to make mistakes, and we want to demonstrate for our children that it's okay to make mistakes, and that we'll, we'll be there to support you. And if you don't have what you need, you know, we're going to figure that out together, instead of leaving you out to dry or punishing you. And, and I, I'm thinking about that a lot, and how much how important that is for the, the work to come, even though it sounds a little broad and vague, that culture setting and and being open and reflective is, is, I think, really, really important.
Director Sargeau.
Thank you, Director Rankin. You took the words right out of my mouth. The, the, I'm, I think it's probably intentional that the lead by example is number one.
Perhaps.
And to me, what that means is every board meeting, every conversation, wherever we're at, whether we're here on the dais, whether we're out in the community. We're not perfect. We're not always going to say the most perfect polished things. But for the record, my goal is not perfection. My goal is the best that we can do for the children in this district. And if we keep that in mind, we're all going to make mistakes. We need to own those mistakes. That includes me, that includes the superintendent, that includes district staff, that includes principals, that includes building staff. But the example, we need to own our mistakes, we need to own when we misspeak, we need to apologize when necessary, and then we need to bring it back to the center of the circle, which is the children. And so I appreciate that lead by example is number one, because if we're, if we're not doing that, we don't need to be here.
One other thing that the conversation that just transpired between Director Rankin and Director Sargeau also illuminated for me, I feel like, even though I feel like I was probably in the second or third grade when No Child Left Behind was a thing, but ever since then, the some would say filthy. It's so fun to laugh up here, right? What I've noticed is that in the educational community in general, data has become, and the consequences that come along with data has induced fear in so many of our systems, right? And accountability and consequences are two completely different things. And I feel like in our system particularly, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, or co-sign if I'm right, is that we have such a culture of fear around data that it is impeding us from collecting good data. Thank you. Okay, I'm glad that we're all on the same page around that.
Can I, can I co-sign to that? Or you've not done yet?
Absolutely. No, I just wanted to ask one really quick thing for AJ to think about, is that if there's any resources any resources that the council has specifically around changing the culture of data or any advice, that would be incredibly helpful. Please, Director Hampson.
I believe they do. Yeah, that that was the same place that I went to and and the I had circled open and reflective. And first of all, just want to point out the gratitude and acknowledge the bravery that Superintendent Jones has and why I knew he was the right person to help us lead through this work, because he is open and reflective as a professional. And I appreciate about that about him every day and want to make sure that we are doing our best to to model that. And that this is, in fact, the opposite of a fear-based approach. And our schools and this district have managed from a fear-based approach, which is the exact opposite of what how you want to teach children. And it doesn't work. And we need to model that shift in behavior. So that's that's what I appreciated about it so much.
That. Director Chandra. I'm getting used to this whole director thing. Y'all just, you know, just respect me by calling me by the name my mother named me. When we are moving in fear, we cannot make rational decisions. I think that's really critical, whether it's in a crisis situation or in a situation up here on the dais. Fear will almost always lead to the wrong decision. And so if we are committed to centering children and collaborating to do what it takes to ensure that all children are successful, again, we're going to make mistakes. This is not about not making mistakes. It's what we do after we make the mistake, right? Most of the time, we're going to, we're going to nail it. But we cannot be afraid. We cannot be afraid. When the data shows us that the district is disproportionately punishing black and brown boys, we cannot come back with a defense about why that's not real, that's not, you know, it's not telling the whole story. No, it is telling the whole story. You may not like the story that it's telling. We have to pause. So I'm sitting here coloring because my nervous system, I need to regulate my nervous system. I'm an adult on the dais that's had a hard day, and I'm regulating my nervous system. I will not operate in fear up here on the dais. And then when we are fearful, let's pause and talk about it, right? So that we can move forward with the right decisions for our children.
Director Rivera Smith, please.
Thank you. And yeah, in 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 thinking about being up here on the dais, we're soon going to have students up here with us. So if we are operating and decision-making based on fear and deficit mindset, that's teaching them to do so and teaching them in these very important years where they're going to be learning from us and and we're learning from them. And if we are operating like that, that's going to have a direct impact on people who are up here trying to make a difference with us.
Yeah, I, y'all, this is, this is a really great session. But thank you for sharing that. And I think that like a big part of that is also like, as we're coming out of our holes that are our homes after the pandemic, I think we as a board, if we're really gonna, because so, again, I go back to my father. My father always told me, you fear what you don't understand. And for us, if we're not doing all that we can as a body to understand where we are at, and shout out to Dr. Scarlett for putting me on the boundary-spanning leadership, because that's honestly what has to happen amongst us first, especially before we bring children up here, is we need to do what it what needs to be done as a board, especially that we've got such fantastic new directors joining us, to gel together to build understanding of one another. Because our, as long as we understand our differences, we don't have to agree. But I think that that is going to be a first critical step, because fear comes from when you feel like you're out there by yourself, you're going to say something that your colleagues aren't going to agree with, and you're going to get roasted from the dais. And nobody wants that, right? And in order for us to avoid that, we need to get to a place where we understand each other, not necessarily that we agree, but we understand where the other is coming from. And I think that that has got to be a critical first step for us before we push this out to the system.
I'm really appreciative of the kind of warm embrace of the board recognizing that this is not merely a cultural shift for superintendent staff, this is a cultural shift for us, that that I as a board member have to be willing to interrogate my own adult behavior and begin to make adjustments so that I am leading by example and creating the type of culture that our teachers need to be great and that our and that our students need to be great. That how I show up in the boardroom has an impact on how free my teachers feel and students feel to show up in the classroom. So th- this is a critical part of, you know, the difference-making the board can engage in. This is a critical part of why monitoring is beneficial. And so if monitoring is beneficial, that means it's not good enough to come up in here and play monitoring. We've got to come up here and actually do monitoring. Hence the next section, Tips for Effective Monitoring. Go ahead and read this section, and then we'll talk about it.
AJ, it's good energy in here. You can't, you're not privy to this. This is, it's, it's, this space is being held.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm catching some of that vibe, you know, from the opposite coast. Tips for effective monitoring. What's resonating for you? Yes, yes.
No gotcha governance.
Man, why not?
Nonsense. Like, and I mean, I really can't say that enough. I can't count the amount of times that staff have had to endure gotcha moments from directors up here. And it's just that that is unproductive. Oh, my goodness. Like, and what's really great about this as well that I've noticed is that it gives us templates. What questions should we be asking? And now that I think about it, there's also another great document that Mary Furtakis, who for several years was the president of the Taquillo School Board, she's got a really great document around what what are the best questions and how to ask better questions as a board director. So I really, I'm going to dig that up and send it out. But I really feel as though combining these two premises will also give us the ability to just not ask questions for the sake of asking questions. Like, and that's really something that I've noticed over time, is that oftentimes, in a performative way, to appear as though we are really digging in deep, folks will ask either the same question every time we get a packet, or we'll just ask a question for the sake of asking the question. And I really think that that really digging into to this structure gives us an opportunity not only to use our time more effectively, to utilize staff's time more effectively, and it also helps frame what the conversation is going to be like, and it keeps it off of the person and onto the data, which is critical, because I think we miss that step a lot, depending on what the topic is.
Director Hampson.
Sorry, AJ, were you going to say something?
Nope, you got it.
So lots in here that I love, and the don't offer advice piece is, I had another sheet of this, and I had already underlined and highlighted it, and I just did it again because I think it's so important. And 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 my, there's so much good with respect to following up on what President Hershey said. I want to formally, to Director Sarge's point, apologize to staff for any, for all the times that I have done this over the last couple of years, for prior board members who've done that on and from from my position, and for future times when I may do it and hope to be able to catch myself and invite staff. I know we have some staff in the room that that I've are picking up on a lot of this stuff and have been throwing some of it back at me during our conversations, and I want to say, I appreciate it. It's important. I'm looking at you, Consey. And and we need to do more of it. That's what we need to hold each other accountable to knowing our roles and and getting out of the, like, yeah, it's so easy. We got, when we get emails all day long about all this stuff, but that's not our job. And it makes us unclear, unfocused, busybodies, and we never get time to actually focus on the students. And and I think we're, I think we're all done with that. And and so, yeah, I just wanted to apologize.
Look at, wow. And and I think one of the things that's really coming to light for me is that because, I mean, and it's no secret that we have a history in this city of families, community members who have had traditionally a ton of access and advocate in very specific ways. It's almost like dividing and conquering, right? Like, if we keep board directors busy with all X, Y, and Z, then the status quo persists. And so we really have to make the commitment as a team to keep the focus, as Michelle so thoughtfully, is
Yes, yes, yes.
On the students. And it's really
That's right.
Not take that that opportunity for, to exemplify what good board directors we are. That's a real temptation. It's a real one. And I've been there, and I've messed that up plenty of times, trying to save somebody or their situation. And that's not to say that we should not be engaging with community, but at the end of the day, the focus, as it's laid out in these best practices, again, from the Council of Great City Schools, this is not just something that we're making up, we really have to be focused on our students and less about being pulled in each which way in the appearance of good governance and being an effective board director.
Any other questions before we move on? Or, sorry. Go ahead, Director Rick.
I am thinking a lot about comments earlier about fear. And then I'm also thinking back to a previous conversation about pretending. And I think that there, yeah, from a place of fear, to avoid looking foolish, or to avoid looking unprepared, or or to align with loud community members or whatever, that pretending is really tempting. And that what I really like about about progress monitoring and focusing on student outcomes is it it doesn't, there's not really room for pretending. And I think some of the the previous, the various annual reporting to the board that we recently eliminated as a as a bar, not not eliminated that people are monitoring themselves and creating reports, but that it's a presentation. And also the style of work session that was sort of a, like a Socratic method cold call kind of, kind of philosophy, that, you know, the idea that everyone would be accountable because they might get called up for a work session, and so they better be ready. And the idea that that would lead to good operational workings, that was, that was perpetuating fear. That was putting into everybody the fear that they would be the ones called up to put themselves out in front of everybody with a little warning, have to, you know, drop the work they were doing for students to create, you know, to, you're up, you're going to have to do this thing, and then create this this report that wasn't necessarily tied to a broader goal and sort of pretend out of fear that that, you know, everything was fine. And it hasn't, it hasn't served our students. That's the bottom line, really, is it hasn't served our students. And so I think getting away from the pretending, and there is fear in getting away from pretending, because it's, you can't pretend anymore. It's going to be you. But I think that's kind of what we're going for, is it's, it's not going to be one person's butt on the line. And we're not trying to put somebody out in front to to take the fall or take the blame or have that gotcha moment. We're all coming together around kids, which is literally what our job is.
I just, Director Rankin reminded me that the, kind of my first reaction that I think is incredibly important, we hear from our students all the time that what we talk about and discuss here does not reflect their reality. And we experience that as parents, we experience that as school board directors, we experience that as as community members. It's a sobering moment to recognize the importance of having the bravery to acknowledge the reality of what our students are dealing with right now. Whether it's the fault of the system or not, they need for us to be brave enough to acknowledge where they are. I I remember trying to explain that to my own mom, who would express to me how much I love my mom. She would tell me that I had it so good compared to terrible things in her upbringing. And as a result, I didn't feel seen in my own suffering and and difficult times. And we do that in this district to our kids all the time. And they, it doesn't matter whether, what what our opinions are about it, we need to hear what they're saying. And and that is then reflected in how they're doing in our in our schools. So I I think that's a, understanding reality is a really profound piece of this for me in terms of being just a tip.
I, I want to add to that reality for teachers, too, because I think we'll say or or hear or think one thing, and then hear from a teacher that's like, actually, that is not how it's working.
You, AJ?
Now that we've had an opportunity to dig in a little bit and think through kind of what is monitoring, you know, why is it beneficial and how are we effective at it? I want to slip now to the second part of our agenda, which is the role play. Now, for this role play, I will role play the chair of the board for Seattle Public Schools. Hello, I'm your newest elected official. Board members, you'll role play board members, right? You'll role play superintendent. Apparently, superintendents don't wear jackets in role plays. And what we'll do is we'll just go through this like normal. Now, the main reason I'm role playing as the board chair is so that Brandon actually gets some learning yourself. The the problem is whoever's facilitating doesn't really get the same reflective ability as everybody else, because you're spending so much of your brain trying to keep things going. And so I'll offload that. And we may do a second practice where that's the case, but by the time we get to the third practice, it will make most sense to punt that back to you, or even pass it around the table and get other various people opportunity to practice facilitating and see kind of what it's like to keep a monitoring conversation on track. So we'll dive in, we'll stay in the role play for a little bit. Whatever happens, happens, who knows? You know, we'll, we'll see, we'll all find out together. And then after we've role played a little bit, then we'll go to the third part of our agenda for the evening, which is to evaluate how we did and just really talk through and process through it. So, that being said, all right, board members, we have just completed that item of business on to the next. So the next item of business is monitoring. This evening, we will be monitoring our goal about our black boys and teens in co-working classes who graduate and also successfully complete at least one event. in co-working classes who graduate and also successfully complete at least one of that course. Our expectation, the goal is that that will increase from 52% in June 2019 to 62% in June 2024. As part of our monitoring work board, we always start first by making sure that we have the information we need. And so the first thing we should be looking for is what's being monitored, which policy? I just read which policy. The second thing we look for is, is there data that clearly shows the three previous reporting periods? The current reporting period and the, and the target reporting periods? Board members, do you see that data provided to us by the superintendent's monitoring report? Oh, you, you saw it? What page is that on?
I believe it's on the second page.
Yeah, it's on the second page in the middle. That's right. Yeah, that's where I saw it as well. Okay, then the next thing we have to be certain of is that the monitoring report clearly shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance. What the superintendent is saying is the current level of performance relative to the board's goal. Does the monitoring report include the superintendent's evaluation of performance?
Yes, it's here on page two. Superintendent's statement on progress of the school. Is that, I believe that's it?
That sounds like a question. Is that a question or a statement?
Yes, if it's there. And I believe it is here. I believe it is entitled Superintendent's Statement on Progress on the School.
Anybody else see, people agree, disagree? I see people still kind of flipping around.
Well, let, I, my teacher senses are tingling. Let's take a moment and clarify where we're at. And so AJ, could you back up just a little bit and re, reposition us for the task?
Oh, no. Folks are perfectly on task. What's happening is that as board members are looking at the document, it's simply not immediately clear to them what is the current status of performance. It is referenced on the document, but the fact, the thing, Mr. Superintendent, for you to be clear about, the fact that your board members are looking for it means it ain't clear. And so all that means is there's opportunity for a process improvement. And so, yes, it is provided, but the fact that you have to hunt for it largely defeats the purpose of this big monitoring report. And so as a process improvement, the next version of it, just find a way to make it just more just direct, clear, obvious, maybe even make sure it's on the first, first, first page so the board members don't have to look for it. And then finally, the fourth thing we look for is, does it clearly show supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation and that provides information about any needed next steps? Is that included in the monitoring report?
Yes, on the second to last page.
Yeah, yeah, I'm seeing all those things. All right, well, since we have the things necessary for monitoring report, we can proceed with monitoring. What's always important to just, you know, stay present to is if, if the critical things you need to engage in monitoring aren't present, then we should not proceed with monitoring. Instead, we need to hand it back to the superintendent, say, hey, do your homework, and we'll pick this up at the next meeting. But fortunately, we've got the things we need. And so the floor is open. I want to bifurcate our inquiry into two different chunks, backward looking and forward looking. And so first, we'll start with questions that are really reflecting on trying to understand how we got here. Where are we and how we got here? And so these all questions are backwards looking. They're really about, you know, who questions, you know, which students are we talking about? What questions, you know, which circumstances, you know, surround all of this? Why questions, kind of which phenomenon helped describe what happened? So that's what we're going to focus on first. Much later in the conversation, I'll invite folks into really future-facing questions, like, which are largely about how are we going to respond to all of this? Like, what's going to happen next? But before we talk about what happens next, first, we need to be crystal clear about what has happened to date, what has brought us here, so that we're not just kind of blindly careening forward, but that we're doing so grounded in what's true for our students today. So the floor is open. Board members, what questions do you have about this monitoring report?
I have a, just a technical question. The, it states that we are supposed to see these things represented in yellow slash red or yellow. Is the color actually like sienna? And that's why I'm confused.
So in the interim progress data on the second page, i- in theory, we would have the colors on there, but the colors are only representative of status. And so to make it clearer, I think we would, we would include just highlighted yellow and highlighted red, but it's not on the graphs, on the bar graphs themselves.
Can I offer something kind of like outside of the scope here really quickly? I think AJ really raised a good point about board directors being able to understand it. When I was with the feds, we had a rule that everything was written on a sixth grade reading level so that it would be accessible. And oftentimes, when folks ask us for transparency, we say, oh, well, that document's on the, on the website. They have to first be able to find it, second, be able to interpret what it says. And then if I'm looking at this and immediately I can't tell what the AT double hockey sticks, this is trying to communicate to me, I, I fear for what parents who are actually interested in the, in the progress of their children, what they're finding online as well. And so before we embark on these progress monitorings, really, I don't know what the, what the solution is, but making these things as simple to digest as possible.
That's, that actually is the solution. So the expectation for the staff with monitoring reports is whatever level your communication department has determined the communication from the district should be provided in, that's the language, that's the level that this document should be provided in as well. So some districts say, you know, we're, we target a fifth grade reading level. Some districts say we target an eighth grade reading level or something else. But whatever your communication department says, this is, this is how we should, this is should be our style of writing when we are sending things out to the public, that whatever that style guide says, that should apply to monitoring reports as well. And so again, that's just a process improvement, you know, for the superintendent's team to be reflective on is if it takes anybody a lot of work to digest or understand these, whether because of linguistics or because of design or coloration or layout, then that just means, you know, all there is to do is for us to iterate and, you know, take that next step. There's just, you know, one more area where we have an opportunity to improve. Not that something was done wrong, just that something could be done better. What other questions do you have, board members?
Just, just a training, for training purposes, the line graph and the bar charts are supposed to be simplified. Is that correct? That by design? And if there's a, if there's a simpler way to do that, very open to it, but I'm just, I'm going off kind of script here, but I wanted to just make sure that we are following the, the protocol for how we represent this. So do we have the, the authority, so to speak, to, to change this to a simpler-looking graph, AJ?
So certainly, whatever works for you. I tend to find that a line graph is about the easiest way to represent this data often because what you're trying to get is trajectory. And so if you can find another way of, a simpler way than a line graph to communicate trajectory, let me know. I doubt you'll find that. But I, I think what is creating some confusion is, you know, what do the colors mean, you know? And so maybe some type of legend or something, you know, to go along with it might be helpful. But certainly, anything that the administration, you know, thinks better matches the intention of having this fit the district's larger style guide for public communication, absolutely, that makes the most sense.
And, and I think it does make, I think the graph itself makes sense. I just got thrown off by the colors. I now understand that they would have been somehow highlighted. Obviously, if, if it were exceeding expectations, maybe it would be green or something, and that's where the, the key would, would come in. So that would be an improvement.
If I may read just some talking points to, for some clarity here. While the data in this memo illustrates FPS is making progress in helping students earn their credits, we are not currently on a upward traject, and we're, we're not currently on an upward trajectory. So we are making progress on the top-line measure, but the progress is not consistently upward, hence the yellow-red rating. That's the, that's the
Okay.
The expanded definition of the yellow and the red.
I think.
And, and that is a wonderful distinction for the superintendent to make, because that, that is really helpful. And so now the, the process improvement is just to figure out how to more clearly articulate that in the document so that people will get that, because that's a really va, what you just said is a really valuable thing to communicate. And so now figuring out, great, so next time we'll figure out how to tweak it up so that anybody could grab that with or without the superintendent sharing. Yeah, who else? What questions do you have?
I have a wondering, and maybe this is the best one to use, but with PDFs, we often want to make sure they're ADA accessible too. So whatever graph or chart would be most, would be most appropriate for that use, that's probably what they should be in. Because this is all, I assume it's all to end up on the website and send somehow communicate with families. So what can be most appropriate there?
Other questions? Comments? By the way, it's perfectly normal. The first time we do this, there, there's a lot of reflection on the, on the, the document itself, rather than the content of the document. That's, that's normal. So if you have other things like that, feel free to share those. But also looking to use this time to ask questions of the superintendent about the content of the document as well. Who else? Questions? Comments?
A content question. On the, the bar graph that disaggregated results, we have the top-line measure, the interim measure for 10th grade, and the interim measure for 9th grade. And so what I am wondering is if this is one group of students in 9th grade, that same group of students in 10th grade, and then today? Or if this is this year's 9th grade students, this year's 10th grade students, and top-line is all high school students this year?
Bring that by me one more time. I just want to make sure I answer your question.
You're trying to determine who specifically we're talking about at what time?
Yeah, so my question about the disaggregated results, there's, for each group, there's, there's first-generation African-American male born outside of the US, second-or-more generation, yeah, US-born, non-English home. There's multi-generational African-American male students with IEPs, African-American students served by ELL program, and African-American students in the highly capable program. And then for each of those groups, we're seeing the top-line measure, the 10th grade measure, and the 9th grade measure. So my question is, is this all for the same year? This year's 9th graders, this year's 10th graders, and then high school students total? Or is it two years ago 9th graders, last year's 10th graders, who are the same students? And then those students this year, whether they are 11th and 12th grade? Does that make sense?
It's the, the former.
Okay.
And so the.
So we're looking at this year's students.
Yes.
The top-line is all African-American males in high school. The 10th grade measure is this year's 10th graders, and the 9th grade measure is this year's 9th graders.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And, and what this blue bar chart represents is disaggregated African-American males. But it's represented, but the 9th graders have, are represented in this blue bar, and the 10th graders are represented in this blue, in this blue bar. So it's.
And those are two different groups of students, because those are this year's 9th graders and this year's 10th graders.
That is correct.
We're not following one cohort through their years.
Yeah, so, so if you look at the, for those of you that can see it, the medium blue, if you, it's a little less than royal blue, is 10th grade, and the light, light blue is 9th grade. And so it's for, for this, for 21, 22.
So what we should expect to see, or what I would expect to see, is that three years from now, we could look at this disaggregated graph with the one for next year and the one for three years from now, and hopefully see the top-line measure at least increase.
That, that is my, that is correct. Yes, yes.
And then may, you know, some, I mean, the, some of the, some of the disaggregated results taken by themselves meet or exceed the goal for the top-line goal. Like, the African-American students in highly capable, a second-or-more generation African-American male, that group exceeds, multi-generational, that group exceeds the expectation taken by itself.
That is correct.
But students served in the ELL program, students with IEPs, are where it looks like we need to focus on support to bring.
I want to add to that really quickly. I, I am with you 100%, but what's missing here for me is to know what proportion does each of these group make up in the whole, right? Because we could be focusing on a really small subset of students where the real need, depending on how many students are in that category, might be in a different place.
President Hershey, do you mean as compared with the rest of the district population as a whole? Or as, as represented within the African-American male student?
Yeah, so it could be both, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think for the sake of this exercise specifically, so for example, if we've only got, and this is true for a lot of the times we've been presented this data, African-American male students in highly, in the highly capable program, we're looking at that, they're doing great, right? It could only be 10 of them, whereas in the first-generation African-American born outside of the US, it could be 200. Or even on the flip side, if we take a look at students with IEPs, they could be underrepresented as compared or overrepresented as compared to other groups, right? And so where we focus our attention and where we're asking our questions, not to say that we need to like go with the majority, but in terms of as we're thinking about how we're going to prepare this data, having the exact population of those students worked into those lines for me would be helpful.
Yeah, and I think that's the, the context, right?
Right, right.
Because this is exactly a really good demonstration of, I mean, I remember four years ago, maybe, under Superintendent Nyland, attending a presentation about the school climate data.
Sure.
And there was a, part of that presentation was about overall how much some of those things had improved.
Right.
But what wasn't part of that presentation was that it was mostly affluent white parents who had responded to the survey, and that while those scores may have improved, then if you also, you know, if you looked at like a couple of individual schools, there were a couple of individual school, and this is again several years ago, but a couple of individual schools where two years consistently, their positive feelings and approval ratings had gone down, and half of their teaching staff had left. And that wasn't present at all in the, hey, hey, look, we're really making improvements in school climate. And so, yeah, I guess that's a long way of saying totally agree. The context is really important because, yeah, this bottom one looks great, but of course, that's students in highly capable. The assumption is those students are of course taking one or more advanced courses.
Sure.
And like you said, that could be a really small number.
Sure, yeah.
If I might, I might add, back then, four years ago, we spent much time examining the gaps between different racial groups. Now, we, we talk about achievement that we think that's not productive. different racial groups. Um, now we, we talk about achievement, um, that we think that's not productive. Instead, we believe it's important to focus intensively on progress we are making or not making in providing equitable learning experiences, improving outcomes for black male students. So we need, we're, we're trying to look within black male students, and then not necessarily comparative to other people in, in the gap. So that's the
So context, but not comparing
That's correct.
Experience to other, yeah.
That's right. So we have to talk about the nuanced experiences of African-American male students. And that's, that's why we broke out this data this way.
I just can't say how much I appreciate that. And I mean, if we're really going to be serious about targeted universalism, this is what this looks like, right? And the intersectionality, because oftentimes when we hear from community, it's like, you're, you're, you say you're focusing on black boys, but my black boy in special education, or my black boy who receives ELL services, those two experiences, especially depending on if you're going to school in the north end of the city versus in my district, are completely different. Yet often, based on how we have presented data in the past, those two individuals would be lumped into the same data set. And if we're utilizing resources, trying to, without this type of differentiation, I worry that we're not effectively using taxpayer dollars. So really excited to see that this is a, this is a priority for us. Director Hampson?
If I may just add one other point to just extend on that. Uh, these groupings are informed by the listen and learn sessions from our AAMA work. And so if we did that work in February, that's still, that's informing how we disaggregate it. So, uh, not only we have literature behind that, but we also have our, our families telling us, this is, this is the way we want to, want to be represented and seen. So just wanted to extend that. Thank you.
Yeah, and a huge shout out to Dr. Williams, I'm sure, for leading that work.
I had two questions. The, the first is related to the clarification you provided about the, um, coloring that, that we're not seeing the yellow-red, where you said that the reason why it's only partially on track is because it's not consistent in the
Y- yes.
Trajectory.
If we saw, uh, an incline consistently going up, we'd be on yellow, but since we went yellow down, so we went up and then down and back up, thus yellow and red.
And was there any context for that, or any sense of why that dip occurred at that time? Any other circumstances or shifts that might have?
I believe this is from nineteen, from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. Um, let me get back on, let me get back to you on that. I do have some notes in here. I'm gonna find that, an answer to you, for you.
The second question is whether or not in the disaggregation, uh, there was, uh, income was something that was also considered. Um, and, and in a, a attempt to uh, remove the pieces, um, over which we don't have control as a district.
Yes, uh, we can add income, but income was not considered in, in this disaggregation. But I think that's one of the, one of the, a key factor that we should, we should look at.
The floor remains open for questions about, you know, who is the data talking about? Of, uh, what circumstances or phenomenon of influence data, why, why are we here? Other questions that help us better understand the data presented. Anyone else?
Hello?
Okay. I wanted to respond to Director Hampson's comment. Um, absolutely, when we think about, when we disaggregate all of the data, we see different things. And I want to caution us to not, um, not busy up, I can't think of the exact word, but not busy up our report. Not that we don't want to know that information, I think one of the things we're trying to do is make this simple so we can understand it. And so that, you know, our families, our parents, and even our students. The students can, if we give them the chance, they can read and interpret this data. We, we sell them short so often by assuming they can't understand this data. And so I just, you know, maybe what we need are multiple reports, but I just don't want to busy up one report that people are looking at, and there's so much data, and it's so overwhelming that people can't make sense of the that just people can't make sense of it. I mean, all of it's important. I don't want to say some things are more important than, than others, because that may be true, but I'm not trying to decide that right now. So I just want to caution us on ensuring that whatever report we're looking at, if a parent who doesn't have an advanced degree, like many of us sitting on the dais, if we can't read it, we can't expect them to be able to read it and understand it, and we surely can't expect particularly our, our middle schoolers and our high schoolers to be able to understand it.
Absolutely. One of the expectations of the monitoring report, just, um, one to three at max, one to five page document. Um, the intention being that instead of having this really broad, uh, view that we're going deeper, uh, and have, trying to have a much deeper understanding of fewer things, rather than a more shallow understanding of many things. What that does, however, to your point, it puts a premium on, are we looking at the things that, you know, have the biggest impact, the biggest leverage, uh, on the topic at hand? Um, and, and so it's, that is a, that is a hard task, especially since, again, the intention to keep this fully legible and useful, um, is to have it be no more than one to three, maybe one to five pages, uh, max. Um, and so, yeah, you do, it does not benefit folks to try to overload people with a ton of data. Instead, what is a deep understanding of a few things?
So if I may go back to Director Hampson's question around the year-over-year comparisons. Um, while this is, um, not actual data, but if we were to talk about a year-to-year comparison, we did have, uh, changes in our grading policy. So we, we had, we went from, uh, As and incompletes to A, B, and Cs and incomplete. So that might be a, a reason why we see a dip in, in terms of, in terms of grades, credit earnings, excuse me.
I, I had one more quick question about, about the same bar graph is, um, the students who are represented by more than one of these categories, say a student with an IEP who also has served in the ELL program. Are they represented individually twice? Like, so they're, that student would be represented as with an IEP, and then separately as receiving EL services? Yes. Okay, so if we were to take, like, the P twenty-two or P two, whatever, that enrollment report. If we were to, to have numbers attached to each of these, it would be more than the total number of students, because some, some students fall into two categories. Okay, thank you.
How do you control for that? Or is that something that we even need to control for? Probably not, no?
Well, I, I wonder if, if there's anything different that we, if there's different approach needed for students who do fall into more than one category.
Yeah.
Um, or
Take all the students that fit into more than one category and
Yeah, so, I guess, yeah, my wonder is, um, and I'm thinking about a very particular real student, um,
Now that's twice exceptional.
Right? Um, uh, so I'm thinking about uh, how we would best serve and give access to, or how a school would, a student with, uh, a parent who's learning English as a second language, um, and has a disability and has an IEP. And, um, even if, which was not the case with the student, but even, even if the, the IEP support was completely there and the EL support was completely there, um, those two things don't often intersect within the building. A student goes to one place for EL support, and a student either goes to another place or is restricted to another place, or pulled out or whatever for, for special education. Um, so where, this is maybe getting into a whole other conversation, but, um, is it useful to represent the overlaps in this data? Or is it more useful to, um, isolate the different, uh, the different categories and talk about the intersections in a different context?
So, so if we do have intersections, there's, there's opportunities to provide, uh, specific supports. So for example, with our students with IEPs, there's a number of steps that we're taking for, to support them. Uh, and students that are EL in our IB programs, we're recognizing their multilingual abilities. And so I think there's, uh, some combinations of treatments or support, so to speak, that we can, we can provide. So I think it would be useful to look at the, the combinations, whether it's two or three, I mean, four on here, that they would, they would have a specialized, uh, support program.
Can, can I just say, I was worried that Director Rankin was gonna start giving advice, and then she followed, she, she came back around with a question, and I was like, oh, thank goodness.
I'm, I'm looking for, I'm trying to look at this data and then go back to the, uh, the, the page. Back to the progress monitoring student outcomes sheet, that gives the during monitoring, all those questions, the who, what, why, and how. And I'm not really seeing, maybe I'm missing it, I'm not seeing many why answers to the why questions. Why is it working? Why is it not working? So like, for example, why are students with IEPs, um, not such a lower, um, progress than the other groups, things like that? Like, I'm not seeing much why in here. I, I think the only line that really maybe was a why was their claim to, that more recent efforts
So I want to, I want to clarify, the administration was explicitly instructed not to try to answer all the questions be, because the point of having the conversation, one, that would have taken a lot more than five pages. And two, the point of having the conversation is to have the conversation. So, uh, don't ever look at the monitoring report and expect that it's going to answer all the questions. The point of those is not for the administration, the point of those is for the board.
Say again?
This is a guide for us, questions that, to guide us to ask these questions about data.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, so, okay, so
To inquire in response to the data.
Then shouldn't, should those be questions that the superintendent sets out to answer?
No.
She's, he says no, he says yes, he said no.
Uh, yeah, he should, he should set out to answer those.
But I, but I want to, what I do want to do is capture the questions that you all have, so that we can get back to you. If they're not, if they're, if I'm not able to, to talk about them here, here right now. AJ, please.
Yeah, but the, in the, in the project, uh, the progress monitoring document, it's laying out sample questions for board members to ask. So you should, you should not look in the monitoring report and expect that all those questions are going to be answered, because then there's no point in having a conversation. Um, and so the, the intention here is that you all will have a conversation about these things. Um, even if the superintendent wanted to answer all those questions, there's no scenario where he's going to be able to do that in five pages. Um, and so this is, this is for you to ask. So the invitation is, um, what is the question that you have, and go ahead and ask it.
Okay, so yeah, so then, okay, so then the question, haha, again, uh, what is it that, is why? So why is there such a lower, um, worth of graph, I don't know, where are you? Why are AAM students with IEPs, um, why are their results so much lower than the other groups?
So in part, we, we haven't, uh, taken the number of steps necessary to, uh, provide them, uh, tangible and meaningful supports. Uh, we prospectively have some things that we're doing, but right now, we have, we haven't provided the strategies that are, are gonna have them progress.
And I suppose that the follow-up would be of those questions, um, how, um, can this happen? How, and I guess, like, how can the board help, especially, like, what, how can we help you achieve that, and make that happen for them?
And we will come to, um, future facing questions in a little bit. We're still giving the board time to finish up any, uh, past facing questions. Uh, the intention being first, have a deep understanding before trying to go of the past before trying to, uh, go forward. And by the way, we're at that point where we'll be making that transition shortly. Uh, but before we do, any other questions that board members have about who, why, what? Yeah, go for it.
I have another one, yeah. Um, kind of going along with, uh, Director Vera Smith's question. Uh, I believe I have a pretty good idea of why the IEP, students with IEPs would be, um, below the, uh, the measure that we're looking for as compared to the other students. Um, because in a lot of cases, they've been removed from the general education environment since they were in kindergarten over and over and over again, or permanently. Um, so my question is that the next kind of closest aligned category is students in the EL program. Um, and so I guess, as, same as the why program, or the why question with students with IEPs, um, you know, I personally don't know as much about how EL services are, um, administered. Is it a similar situation where the students are missing educational opportunity because they are receiving language services outside of the classroom and missing instructional time? Is, um, is it that language is so deeply ingrained in even math and other topics that that's a barrier, or is there something else going on? And, um, yeah, I get, I'm actually, I know these are not, these are for training purposes only, these numbers, but, um, I assume that they're not completely made out of thin air. Um, and so I, I guess I'm a little surprised actually to see, uh, the EL group, um, uh, it's kind of so disparate from some of the other groups.
I know this, these data are not actual data. Um, and in the next session, when we talk about future focus, I could talk about what we're going to do, but I don't have a good answer as to why EL is, uh, lagging behind the, the target number.
Oh, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, one, one more question before we add in future focus.
Um, I have a question about the, uh, I have a question about the what, the circumstances that surround this data. Um, I don't necessarily want to add more to this report, but I am kind of curious about the experiences on a granular level from building to building. So I'm wondering if it would be possible to see the data with the high school? One way of disaggregating it, so we can kind of understand the circumstance.
Certainly, and, and there's, there are things that we're doing across high schools, but there's, there's certainly, uh, dynamics within each high school. Uh, for example, high, high schools are using the 9th grade success tracker. And so there's, there's, uh, standardization that we're using across a, all of our comprehensive high schools and, and our up and, uh, those are yielding some, some, some results. Uh, however, uh, we haven't represented this in high school by high school, but we definitely have those data.
I have a quick operational question. Um, when we have these monitoring sessions, uh, meetings, will it be up to, will it be up to the superintendent alone to answer them, or will staff be there to also? It'd have to all be you, you can't, you can't like point to Caleb, be like, this, Dr. Perkins, you answer it.
So today, I'm phoning a friend, uh, and, and, and Doc, and Dr. Perkins?
Yeah.
But for future, it's, it's all, it's all in superintendent, the way the design is, uh, is that correct, AJ?
Absolutely. Uh, so remember, part of the intention of monitoring is this is, uh, essentially a formative evaluation. Basically, you are doing a formative evaluation of your superintendent 12 times per year. 12 times per year, figuring out, you know, is my superintendent really on track with the things that we need to do? Because the belief here is that student performance is indistinguishable from superintendent performance. They're the same thing. So if stu- student performance is trending upward, that means the superintendent doing, doing what needs to be done. If student performance is trending down or even staying flat, then that gives us some insight that superintendent performance is not where it needs to be. And so because they're indistinguishable, this is essentially a formative evaluation of the superintendent. So instead of just doing one annual evaluation of the superintendent, you're really doing 12 formative evaluations of the superintendent, uh, or 11 formative each year, and then one annual, that's the amalgam of all of them. Um, and so for that reason, uh, it's designed to be a conversation between the board and the superintendent. a conversation between the board and the superintendent. You're not trying to figure out what, uh, all of your non-employees know. You're trying to figure out what your employee knows.
So then in that, in that, in that, um, in that situation, then say we have a meeting where you can't answer eight out of 10 of our questions. Would that be in since where we would table the report? Or would we still perhaps accept the report but expect those answers to come back later?
So, so that kind of depends. And hold on to that question because we'll actually circle back into that when we're doing an evaluation. The short version, and again, we'll dive into this when we get into the evaluation of your performance, is think of it as three different types of questions. There are questions about strategy, questions about tactics, and technical questions. Uh, technical questions are the details, you know, what, what exactly is this data referring to? You know, uh, what is, what type of assessment is this? You know, technical questions. The next is tactical questions. Well, what are we doing in that school? And, you know, who's actually going to do this? And, uh, you know, what time will that, you know, intervention begin? Those are tactical questions. And then there are strategic questions. What is our big picture approach to resolving this thing? Monitoring conversations should be about strategy, not about tactics and not about technical issues. So right now, we're sorting through some technical issues just as, because we're learning the process. But in practice, monitoring reports should be clear enough that there shouldn't be a bunch of technical questions. Like, it should be fairly apparent what the data is describing. And there, um, and if board members are curious about tactical things, make time to visit with your superintendent or email those in. But monitoring conversations should be about strategic question. And so if your superintendent doesn't know what the big picture strategy for addressing major issues in the district is, that's a problem, um, and it will be helpful to you to, to have ferreted out that that's a problem. Uh, but again, we'll dive into that more deeply in the, um, in the selfie valve here in a little bit. Yes?
Thank you for that perfect example of what a strategy question, that monitoring is a strategy question. Did I miss your examples of tactical and technical? And if, if I didn't miss it, can you please give an example like you did for the monitoring?
Yeah, so example of a strategic question is, uh, so strategic questions are trying to understand and what is our big picture approach to something? So maybe you look at the data and say, you know, I noticed that our multi-generational students seem to be performing, um, at a lower rate than our second generation students. We, earlier, we asked why that is. Uh, now could you give us a sense of what is your approach to address? Uh, and you said that the why behind that is because there are supports that second generational students have provided, that multi-generational students aren't provided. So what is your approach to resolving, uh, this issue? So that we see improvements in multi-generational? That fills, uh, that fills as close to the line as you can on the strategy. And so anything that is even higher level than that, definitely feels more strategic. If you go lower than that, though, it starts to feel tactical. Like, so which specific schools, you know, are gonna get these additional supports? Or, you know, how many teachers are gonna be providing these supports? Or what time during the day will these supports be provided? Those start to feel tactical. They're really, they're not really about what is our overall plan? They're about how are we gonna implement the plan? And then there are technical, you know, questions. Technical questions are really just trying to understand the mechanics that are in front of us. You know, um, I see the, you know, um, I see this as ninth and 10th grade. Is that this year's ninth and 10th graders or last year's ninth graders and this year's 10th graders? Now, that's more of a technical question. When monitoring is at its best, it's really when it's focused on strategic questions. Generally speaking, if you ask a lot of technical or tactical questions, uh, as board chair, what I should do is, um, invite the superintendent to write those down and email us the answer, you know, on Friday or something like that. Or maybe the superintendent will say, I don't have, uh, I don't have those tactical, answer the tactical questions today, but I'll make sure, um, you know, we get that together and we'll get that to you on Friday. But what you should always expect is that your superintendent can answer strategy level questions since that is very much centerfield for their job description.
A couple of observations before we move forward. First off, tactical, technical, strategic, like, gold. I really think that that, that, that sums up a lot of time that we as a board have spent in the tactical and technical aspects of how we do our work without really being strategic, right? I also think that it's like mind-numbingly obvious that we have, in my recollection, never tied a superintendent's evaluation to the actual performance of students. Can somebody correct me if I'm wrong? I don't remember that being a part of former Superintendent Juno's evaluation directly. It's supposed to, but like, when I, what, really, where this gets into it is that like, the more I read, the more I, I spend time out in community, folks ask us the question, like, why are you not focused on the learning? And oftentimes, we are just simply not focused on the learning. You know what I'm saying? And so for us, this type of shift allows us to do both. It allows us to focus on the changes that we need to make in the classroom in terms of making sure that our students are coming into safe and welcoming environments because those impact what our students know and are able to do, which directly impacts the superintendent's evaluation. I think the other piece of that is really thinking about when we're receiving these reports, how do we as a board pull ourselves out of the technical and the technical and really focus on the strategic? And that, that's where my head is sitting at this point. Um, yeah, just an observation. And as we move forward, how do we communicate that out to? And really, now it's coming back to me. I think it's also a sign that if we are in a position to where we're asking a bunch of technical questions, that to me says that there is an issue with how the data has been presented. Right?
It's also part of pretending. If we, if we go down and talk about
Right.
all the doors being replaced in all of our high schools, we don't have to talk about not serving students with disabilities.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
We, we've, we've asked a lot of questions that are looking backward to help us understand the data. Let's roll into it. You could still ask more of those questions, but feel free to layer in some of the how questions. I know a couple of you had some how questions earlier. If those are still relevant, you wanna dive in, uh, this is your time. Uh, we've got a few more minutes in our monitoring session. Feel free, what questions do you have either looking backwards or looking forward? The floor is open.
So seeing that we've missed, or the targets for interim measures, one and two are each off by, uh, three or four and three percentage points respectively. Uh, can you give me some assessment of, uh, why you believe that's the, the case? If you, um, have any understanding at this time? And then what the, going forward, the approach will be to either, did we set the metric? Was, was the metric too high? Or do we need to adjust some of the strategies to, um, reaching those targets?
So, so going forward, uh, I think there's strategies that we will use, um, and you'll see this in the monitoring report. We're talking about strategies under credit earning, regarding how are we going to, it, how are we going to provide more credit earning opportunities? How are we gonna, uh, make more awareness available to students so that, and students and families so that they know how, how to access these credit opportunities? And so going, going forward, we'll also talk about relationship building. Uh, what, what's, what are the key things that we're gonna do? For example, with mentoring. And then just access to, uh, advanced coursework. What are we doing from a policy perspective for creating more, again, access to, uh, advanced course taking? So, uh, I think the, the difference in the gap that we're in right now is we haven't been intentional on these, these previous steps that were, that, these previous strategies that, that I'm trying to articulate right now.
Other questions?
Back to my other one is how being as some groups are not achieving towards goal. How can the board support you in achieving these goals?
Well, I'm not being flippant when I say this, but your, your discussion that we started out with this around having grace and not pretending and being honest and being collaborative is huge. But more specifically, I think there's some policy, some policy, uh, implications. Uh, for, for example, policy 2194, we need to get that on track to, to go forward. And
Our new directors don't know what 2194 is.
Oh, sorry. Uh, it's the rigorous course policy. Improve the rigorous course policy. And that's the policy to improve access to advanced coursework. Uh, that's one way. Continue to funding, continue funding initiatives, uh, going forward that are supporting these. And the other piece is really continuing to, to, uh, champion targeted universalism and focus on, uh, advanced coursework at the same time. And so we've talked about, uh, just meeting a minimal standard for African-American males, for example, over time. Now we're talking about actually African-American males participating and advancing and matriculating through advanced coursework. So, uh, from a policy perspective and using your, uh, your voice to make sure that that, that emphasizes a value and important, I think that, that will, those will be three ideas that are really, be really important for us moving forward.
I just had a follow-up question to that, if Director Vera Smith doesn't. And I'm trying to be careful about how I ask this, so I stay on track. Is, do you have a sense of the extent to which the ways in which we model appropriate behavior as adults and focus on these things for students? And then the, specifically around the championing of targeted universalism, how, how much of what we're seeing is part of the, a belief gap amongst individuals and, and build teachers and administrators around our black male students? Did I stay on track with that question? I hope I did.
Oh, that's a, that's a tremendous, that's a tremendous question. I, I, I think if we're, we, board, um, being disciplined to the community values and representing that first and foremost, as we've set out to do in the spirit of student outcome-focused governance, if we can keep it at that strategic level, policy level, that's helpful to us as staff by, to, to develop the means to go forward. So I think this type of conversation, having this and then sticking to what we've said over this last 90 minutes or so, I think if we can continue to exhibit that, that's gonna be helpful for staff to go back and articulate the means to get to the ends that you all set. So, uh, behaviorally, moving forward, uh, this is the place where we start. And I think if we can sit, if we can, if we continue in this vein, I think we're all good.
Uh, I think we have time for one more question. Anyone have a question?
We're good.
Then as, you know, board chair, I always like to end out with, um, you know, with just, um, having a curiosity about, um, what is, uh, you mentioned that we can champion, you know, target, target universalism. Are there any other particular ways, you know, whether, you know, budgetary or just out in the community, uh, that you see that we as a board can help lift up our, uh, black boys?
Is that a question for me?
For the superintendent, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking to President Hershey. Can you ask that question one more time, please?
Yeah, uh, is your, uh, appreciate your answers to these questions. Uh, my last question is, is there anything else that you see that we, uh, as a board can do? Whether it relates to, uh, future budgetary items or as it relates to championing, uh, the work that's gonna lift up our black boys?
Yes, I think it's, um, really having a, having, I said, I kinda said this earlier, but it's really having clarity around what we believe are the key components of advanced coursework. Is it, is it, uh, IB? Is it, are they, is it AP? Is it, uh, high, college and high school, high, college and high school? You know, what are, what are the key components that you all see from a policy perspective around advanced course taking? And if it's all three, that's fine, but I think some clarity around that would be, would be helpful.
Got it, thank you. And so let's take a pause out of the role play. What I want, um, each of you on the days to do now is to scroll to the last page of the progress monitoring document, uh, which is labeled, uh, evaluating the quality of monitoring. There are five domains. Preparation, dated opinions, question statements, past and future, progress monitoring and project management. And for each of these five domains, go ahead and identify, how did the board perform? Was, uh, the board ineffective, approaching effectiveness, effective or highly effective? Go ahead and evaluate your performance as a board now.
I know, but I'm just saying in general, in general, like my comfort level with engaging. And I, oh, I know, but I'm just saying in general, in general, like my comfort level with engaging with this. But I'm also not at ineffective monitoring. Like I, I come to this board with some knowledge and skills that will lead, that will provide me with some skill to be able to understand the task at hand. And so, I don't know, for me, I feel like I'm approaching effective monitoring to effective monitoring. But it's, it's a, it's variable depending on whether it's preparation, date and opinions, questions and statements, that kind of thing. I have, sometimes I have a hard time articulating exactly what I'm saying, particularly when I'm hungry.
So there, there is a domain of knowledge that you have the best access to, which is what was your performance like? Um, and that definitely needs to be part of this monitoring conversation. However, the overall activity that that needs to inform is identify the column most, that most describes the completed monitoring session. Um, and so you are evaluating the monitoring session as a whole, not just your participation in it. Uh, so, uh, that, with that piece of clarification, anyone else, how would you rate?
I think we, I, I have us as approaching, uh, effective monitoring. Uh, I, I now know that not everybody read it, I guess, but, um, I, I read it, um, and, but, but I still had, I still didn't understand it. I still, uh, this is, um, but either way, um, I think cause it says that some board members have read parts of the monitoring report prior to the meeting and have begun developing potential questions. So I felt like we were all there, um, at least there. I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put us in ineffective, which is any board members have not read them. I don't know, maybe. But, um, yeah, we're, we're getting there. I think this was a really strong exercise.
Okay. So board members, quick question. Do you want your teachers to tell the truth about student performance or do you want your teachers to pretend about student performance? Okay. So guess, guess what you can do to create a safe space for truth telling in student performance?
Tell us.
Engage in truth telling about board performance.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So we literally heard one board member say what?
I did not read it.
Okay. He literally said that he did not read it. He said that out loud like five minutes ago.
Yeah.
So board members, how do you rate yourself for preparation?
Ineffective. Cause it's any.
Oh, I misunderstood that. Okay. So we're ineffective.
Yeah. Any.
Oh, I, I see. Okay. My bad.
So what, what's, what's critical here is, um, it's going to be super easy. You all will be highly effective with monit, with preparation. I have no doubt. But what's critical is you have to joyfully lean in to the most brutal version of reality. Like, because any moment that you shy away from it or kind of get iffy about it, you invite into your schools, a culture of being iffy about, are we going to tell the truth, what's happening with our students? You must lead by example and monitoring. The stakes are very high because you are the culture setters for the organization at the, um, at the highest level. Uh, and so as you engage in self-evaluation publicly, know that you are creating the norm for all self-evaluation that happens throughout the organization. Um, and so your way of creating a safe space for just truth telling about what's happening is to engage in truth telling about what we're doing. And this is not articulated to make you look good. Like that is not the intention of this activity. It is articulated, however, in such a way to help you lead in a way that will inspire others in your organization to feel comfortable and safe, just telling the truth about, hey, you know what? In my heart of hearts, I want all the black boys in my class to succeed. But when I looked at my data, I left half of them behind, uh, last month. And I need some, I need some support and figuring out what am I, what am I going to do this month to make a difference for that? Like you want that to be a safe thing for people like, oh, absolutely. I, I look at my data. I clearly didn't get there. Not if, not maybe, I clearly didn't get there and I just need some help. No, what, what can I do? So a powerful thing for you all to do is be like, hey, we're an ineffective monitoring, you know, when it comes to preparation. What's something that I could do as an individual board member to support us as a team of board members of being highly effective next month? Anybody want to take a stab at that? What's something I could do as an individual board member that could support our team of being highly effective next month?
As a board chair, I could literally call everybody the week before or when it goes out and alert them, hey, there is something that you need to read before we come to the next board meeting.
Yeah. Or one of the things highly effective says is, you know, board members have submitted questions. So as a board member, what's something that you could easily do?
Track submitting questions?
Yeah, yeah. Call the superintendent. Hey, have you received questions from everybody? It was like, well, all except for this one board member. Great. I'm going to give that board member a call and I'm going to encourage him and see if they need any support.
Awesome.
This is the same way you want your teachers to behave and, uh, in their learning communities. You want them to really take a rigorous look at performance. And then, you know, think of what are ways that I can be supportive to help the teachers on my team win. You all do the same thing. What are the things I could do to be supportive to help the board members on my team win? Uh, any other questions or comments about preparation?
Um, I, so I feel like, and I think what tripped me up too is that it sound, I feel like these can coexist, like the approaching effective monitoring, the ineffective, yeah, but they can both be true. Um, and I think they were tonight. So there was some board members who hadn't read and some who had read and prepared.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you for that. So I should clarify. I, I should clarify, this thing goes from left to right.
Say again, sorry AJ.
I should clarify, this self-evaluation, just like the other ones that I've walked you through and will walk you through, always go from left to right. So if something about the far left one is true, you don't go any further to the right. You are at the far left one. If the far left wasn't true, you know, but the next three are, well, no, you were approaching. Um, and so this works from left to right. So thank, thank you for, uh, pushing for that clarification. Um, anything else on preparation? All right. Data and opinions. Uh, how did you self-evaluate?
I said conversa, I said effective monitoring conversation was focused on understanding the data presented in the monitoring report.
Anybody else?
I also selected that option. Effective monitoring.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone have something other than effective?
I drew arrows between, this is what I do. You're gonna have to.
Yeah, you do your thing. Do your thing.
Have to get to know me. Approaching effective and effective. Because I think sometimes one of us can say something that's represents effective and then someone else may dip back over into approaching effective. And so that's just, that's how I operate. That's how I do my own performance evaluation at work. It's like, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of in between here. But I'm always working towards moving to the right. I think that's, that my mindset is moving more and more to the right.
Got you. Uh, anyone else on data and opinions? All right. I had you all down as, uh, ineffective. So the question is, as you reflect on the conversation, were there any moments when you heard board members opining on school system performance or saying anything that could be interpreted by your staff as blatant?
Can you give me an example of when that happened?
I, it did.
Yes, yes. Uh, somebody want to, uh, share? Go ahead.
I did it. I did it when I talked about, since, uh, about IEPs and I said, I know why that's that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other people did this stuff.
Don't go past go. Don't collect two hundred dollars. Okay?
Yeah. And, and so again, what's really critical here is you do not want to create, you know, a culture of fear. And so you're inserting your opinions about what is, isn't happening absent having any data about that. And you're, um, you know, offering up comments that from, from your staff might be interpreted as blame. Those actually contribute to the culture of fear that you, that you all actively want to undermine. This is a very difficult standard to get highly effective at. Because so often like the, the habit, what's habituated is to engage in my opinions about reality. Um, and my opinions about, um, who's to blame? And conveniently, those opinions never highlight my role, my complicit behavior in co-creating a culture of fear. Uh, this is a tough one, this data and opinions, but it's one that I have every confidence you all can, uh, become highly effective at very quickly.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
What if there's data that supports my opinion?
Uh, so, but, but the problem is you're not, the purpose of monitoring isn't for you to opine. The purpose of monitoring is for you to understand what yours, you want to understand what your superintendent's opinion is.
Okay.
Um, and I'm not saying that your opinions and your advice don't matter. I'm just saying they're not part of this specific activity. That's all.
Yep.
Other questions about data and opinions? Uh, we're having fun tonight, people. We're having fun tonight. All right. Let's go to questions and statements. Uh, how did you rate yourself for questions and statements?
First this time, somebody else. I, I did it twice. Somebody else gotta go first.
I'll take a risk.
Yeah.
I said effective.
Okay, why effective?
There's another one, but I need to go back and reread out all these now. But I said effective.
Why effective?
Um, because, okay, so I'll start from the left. I don't believe there was a conversation that was focused on board member opinions and recommendations for what the system should do. So I, I don't believe that happened. Um, I don't believe that the conversation was largely statements of opinion, but included some questions about the data presented in the report. I do believe the conversation was mostly focused on questions about the data presented in the monitoring report, mostly multiple choice or open-ended inquiry.
So definitely one thing that, uh, you all to be applauded for is that, uh, the, the, the inquiry was, uh, really, you know, quite open-ended. Um, so instead of saying, so superintendent, um, did this happen because of A or B? Or even better superintendent, uh, this happened because of A, right? Like, so those are classic examples of yes, no inquiry, um, or multiple choice. Uh, but really this is an area where I feel like you all did, were, were particularly strong, uh, is asking, you know, um, open-ended questions. Uh, so, you know, bravo on that. Uh, anyone else? How'd you rate yourself for questions and statements?
He hasn't told us yet.
Anybody? Did you rate yourselves?
I also said effective.
It sounds somewhat tentative.
Fear.
We are still, we're still in a culture of fear.
I also said effective.
Uh, why, uh, why effective? So why'd you say, you said you also said effective?
Yeah, I agree. I don't feel that we were talking about things.
I can barely hear you.
Oh, I, we're, I'm sorry. I said that, um, I gave us effective because I don't feel that we.
Got it. Uh, anybody have anything other than effective? Okay, so, um, um, I, I, I think it's hard to be ineffective for data and opinions without being ineffective for questions and statements. Um, that, that is really hard. If you discounted any, um, conversation that was focused on opinions, um, I, I didn't hear a lot of recommend, I didn't, I don't remember hearing recommendations what to do. Um, I certainly, certainly heard board member opinions, um, but I didn't hear any recommendations for what to do. And so if we're going to be generous, you know, um, you know, with opinions, um, I would, um, I would join you all, um, at effective largely because your style of inquiry was so just on point. Like it, it actually unusually so. And so, you know, bravo on that. Um, that takes us to past and future. How did you rate yourself for past and future?
I said effective, except for now I'm thinking about specifically my own comments that may have been about.
Yeah, who else?
Never mind. I had it backwards. Sorry. Yeah, I said effective.
Uh, who else? Uh, how'd you rate yourselves?
I had us as approaching.
Why approaching?
It's just the plurality of the monitoring conversation is focused on future action rather than reflection on past action. I think the, um, I think it was not, it wasn't effective because I don't feel like the majority of our conversation was focused on past. I think it was, it was, if anything, maybe fifty-fifty. Um, so I went towards approaching.
Anybody else?
Uh, I, I put effective.
Yeah. So left to your own devices, you definitely would have been approaching. Um, fortunately you had me to interrupt some of your tendencies, um, and that helped push you up to effective. So it's, uh, just know that it's helpful to have, um, a, someone facilitating the conversation, you know, who will kind of nudge things around. Um, but yeah, I, I think, um, left to your own devices, you have slid back, but no, I think you all demonstrated effective monitoring on this, in this role play. That brings us to progress monitoring and project management. How did you rate yourselves?
I, I said effective, but I can't say with certainty that there wasn't any advice offered. I might have just, I think we're so used to it at this point that we maybe tune it out.
Yeah. I, I said approaching. Just because so many ideas for how we can utilize the system for me or recommendations, well, it wasn't recommendations of data, but recommendations about how we could use this going forward.
Yeah, and recommendations about how to make improvements in the monitoring process are totally fair game. Um, in terms of, so, hey, I don't understand this. Could you help, could you add a legend so I can understand the colors? Like that is fair game. What this is specifically talking about is the content of the monitoring report. You know, was that, did I engage in offering advice, just your, uh, going to programmatic discussion rather than strategic discussion? Uh, that, those are really the questions of this particular, um, evaluation. Anybody else? How'd you, how'd you, uh, self-evaluate on progress monitoring and project management?
I actually have a question for you.
Yeah.
I think as a new school board director, I have this temptation to really want to understand the programs before I'm, you're asking questions. But are you saying in theory, I don't need to worry about what their programs are? I should just strictly.
Yeah. So in monitoring, uh, the intention is for this to be a strategic, uh, level conversation. So understanding, uh, what the superintendent's strategy for ameliorating circumstances is, is completely centerfield for this activity. Um, understand, you know, understanding, you know, how specific programs are being implemented is very much at the tactical level for the purpose of this conversation. And so again, the thing to be clear about is having tactical level questions or technical questions or offering advice or opinions. I'm not suggesting those are out of bounds as a, uh, school board member. I'm saying they definitely are not part of effective monitoring. Um, and so if you want to do those, you know, have a one-on-one with your superintendent and talk it out. Um and so if you want to do those, you know, have a one-on-one with your superintendent and talk it out. Like, hey, I I think all the pencils should be blue instead of red, you know, have the conversation. Um but just know that that is not a part of effective monitoring. That won't um inform your understanding of what is a reality for students. And it definitely won't inform your understanding of the superintendent's grasp. On what strategy is necessary to serve students. That's why those things are out of bounds for monitoring.
And and if I can just add to that, that um including the last, the uh annual reporting that we. Did a little cleansing on this board historically has monitored effectively. Not, we haven't done it effectively, we've effectively attempted to monitor programs and. Adults in the system as opposed to monitoring our outcomes for students.
Yeah. And and that's, uh unfortunately, it's fairly normal, uh partially because it's just, it's more fun. You know, to sit around and, you know, tell the superintendent what to do, you know, programmatically and tactically. Um uh strategy is, you know, uh it was less exciting, you know, uh but it's. It's the job you literally applied for, because board members, um and then nobody else can actually do. Like, nobody else represents the vision of the community, so nobody else is in a position to um to really. Um ensure that there are strategies in place to accomplish the vision of the community. Uh like, only you can do that. And so when you abdicate that role by jumping straight into. Oh, I think we should be doing this, doing that, or doing that, you know, all these tactics. Then what you do is you leave the administration to setting the vision and to. Without observation, setting the strategies themselves, only for you to come back later and be dissatisfied with both. Um but the real problem was never the administration, the problem is that you didn't do your job because you were busy doing their job. Um and unfortunately, this is a common dysfunction of boards. You represent the vision and values of the community, nobody else can do that. The superintendent is not the community's representative. Nice guy, like him, hey buddy, he is not the community's representative. Only the board is, which is why this type of strategic level uh oversight has to be done by the board. Or just effectively doesn't get done at all. Uh other questions about progress monitoring and project management before we transition?
Did you give us our grade?
Um I I would, um I would join you at approaching.
Okay.
Approaching. Well, so all in all, this is actually, you know, pretty decent round for your your first practice. Um and hopefully gives you some insights um into how to strengthen uh your monitoring. Uh specifically in the context of how do we create the culture of continuous improvement of safety to be engaged in the learning? Uh how do we continue to create that through our actions right here at the dais? So now that we've gone through. Um we talked about what monitoring is, we did a practice monitoring session, then we self-evaluated. Um what did you learn? What what will you take away from our time together in this first? Uh of several rounds of monitoring practice? What did you learn and what will you take away? Who will be the first to share?
Yo, I'll just dive in. I learned the parameters in which we need to have conversation, which I think is gonna be critical for this board. And also what types of questions and how we should be thinking about developing those questions. I think gives us a lot of, well, at least gives me a really, really good starting place to to really see functionally. How are we going to monitor student-focused outcomes?
Yeah.
Sarge, you hear, um you know, I was, uh Brother Craybill, as you were talking about. You know, our assessment of where we're at on the scale, and I appreciated uh Director Vivian's. Um question because. You know, they're in leadership, there's this um, there's this leadership principle about being on the balcony versus being on the dance floor. We need to be on the balcony because you can't, actually can't see everything that's going on when you're on the dance floor.
That's right.
And so when we think about the role of a school board director, it's nose in, fingers out. Well, the fingers in is when we're on the dance floor. We're like, you know, I'm talking to you. And and it's all about the policy, or I'm talking to you and it's all about the program, but I actually can't see what's going on. In the whole system. And so I don't know if that's a visual to help people understand that. We need to mostly be on the balcony. Sometimes we need to come down and dance. Right? Because we need to build relationships with the people who are on the dance floor, but mostly, we need to be on the balcony.
Yeah, the 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 problem is. You all are accountable for the overall performance of the organization, and so you've got to be constantly looking at the overall performance of the organization. And the more time you spend on the dance floor, which is a really awesome place to be, and like, be be clear. The dance floor is a more fun place to hang out than the balcony. Uh that that, this is, this is just the experience. And so there is a temptation to spend all your time on the dance floor. But just know that inside of doing so, you're abdicating. Your role of representing the vision and values of the community, the community members are counting on you to be their representative. And unfortunately, you have to be willing to let go of the the fun. And the joy and the relationality of being on the dance floor and actually do your jobs. Which does require you to, you know, be in the balcony so that you can see, are we providing justice overall? It's not enough to know, does the person next to me on the dance floor have justice? It's where on the dance floor is justice not reigning supreme right now? And you will not observe that from the dance floor, you'll best observe that from the balcony. I appreciate that as a metaphor. Uh who else? You know, what did, what did you learn? What do you take away from this first round of monitoring practice?
I think, and I'm not trying to be devil advocate here, but I'm trying to think of this this great analogy of the dance floor and the balcony. And while I I see what you mean about seeing the whole scene, um and when you're in it. You know, but I I then I think of uh something I don't teach her mine to say, is like, I see you on the shore. And you see, and you think I'm waving, but I'm drowning. And the idea is that from far away, you see something, but you don't really understand it or even know what you're seeing unless you go in there. So, you know, I'm, sometimes I do think, I'm not gonna be on the dance floor. It's fun, yes, but I think there is value in once in a while stepping out there, um to to see that. Because because, you know, we think they're waving, but they're drowning. So sometimes you gotta be down there, yeah.
Uh uh so let me be clear, absolutely not. If the only, if if the only way. Your children avoid drowning is because you come down to save them. That means your system is broken and there are actually more children drowning than you will possibly ever save. Like, you literally are paying people all day, every day to be lifeguards out here. And if the only way they prevent dr- drowning is prevented. You've got much larger problems than your single trip out into the waters will ever possibly solve. Like, what you want to know is like, hey, wait a minute, how many children are drowning? Uh and how are we reallocating resources to get there? But if the well-being of your children is contingent on individual board members. Ferreting out what is happening in the school system and then solving it. Your children are in worse condition than you can possibly fathom. Other, who else? Wha- what did you learn? What will you take away? Anyone else before we wrap up?
So thank, thank you for that. Continuation of that analogy. The temptation. Is always there and and it's a, it's a temptation coming from a really, really good place. And we all. Fall. To that, I think it's, we really need to support one another in maintaining that broader vision because. And and not getting so far into the, whether it's the water, the weeds, or the dance floor. But that's not to say, one thing, one of the things that I know. That is true about this as well is that we have to take this work, and one of the things that we all saw when we did our our mindfulness work together. We have to take that work as well and those concepts uh to our communities. We do have a role to play out there with community. It's, but but as, but we have teachers in classrooms, we have principals in schools, we have. People that work with, you know, people who, that that's not our job. And making sure the, I'm stuck now on the folding in, the careful folding in of the of the um egg whites or. Whatever, the chocolate or whatever you want to put into the batter. You fold it in. Um but you've got to do it. Carefully, and it's not to create an amalgamation, it's to enhance the overall texture and. Uh and so, so it's, it's, it's not letting go of connectivity. It's shifting the focus of what it is that we're connecting to people about. And that it has to be that holistic picture. And and this, for me, I just want to say that having done this. Uh through the the cohort theoretically and then doing it here in person with my fellow board members, oh my goodness, what a gift and what a huge. The concepts that I had experienced before, but then having them, the opportunity to work through it with my fellow board members was really. Uh impactful to me and and uh helps me get better grounded in these principles.
Um I'm thinking about something uh that. You said to us, AJ, maybe one of our first meetings, I don't know, I wrote it on a piece of paper and I stuck it on the bulletin board right in front of where. I um work when I'm at home, that is. Every, I can't remember exactly what it is, but but the general gist is that time. That board, that a individual board member takes to address an individual. Student or family situation is perpetuating all the inequities in the system. And creating a structure where. Instead of being accountable to students and families and meeting their needs as a system. Uh things only operate at the whim of seven people who are sitting up here. And um.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that because I know, I mean, I I kind of have, you know, when uh someone in- individually emails me about like their specific thing. Uh the impulse is like, oh, I know, I know how to fix that, I know what to do about that. Um but I'm starting to think of it as actually, like, having that on my bulletin board is helping. Fixing it for that one person is just gonna fix it for that one person, and then I'm actually taking the opportunity away from. Um building capacity in the system to address it for for that child and others. Um and what I think is, what I'm, so I'm thinking about that, and also with progress monitoring, something that I'm thinking about too is that. We're not talking about. Our approach, like you said um earlier, we're not talking about how board directors operate as a whole, like. Nobody's saying we're never allowed to have an opinion about things. But this is specifically, what's helpful for me and what I'm gonna try to remember is that. When we're talking about progress monitoring in terms of our goals. That's what we're talking about. And we have so many other opportunities in policy work, in conversations with community, in other work sessions that are. About other initiatives or state laws. Where our opinions and individual voices and other things will come through. So I I just kind of wanted to say that out loud, that. The purpose of this is very specific and very clear, and I think that is very, very helpful and and will only. Reminding ourselves of that, to keep that clear is gonna serve us much better than allowing it to muddy with. Well, but we can also talk about this, and I have an opinion about that, and this other thing. Um if we're really focusing on modeling. What we want to see, but also on um not letting ourselves get back into the um the Seattle way. Problem from all directions and and not actually. Taking action. I think this really helps us focus on the system-wide action.
The the cultural impacts of what you describe are really huge, so let me mi- uh address both points that you made. Um so first, i- if you think about it. Again, you all are trying to create cultural norms for your organization, so sometimes it's helpful to think about. How would I want the interaction between a principal and a teacher to be? So if a, if something isn't working in the teacher's classroom. Do I want the principal to say, well, you need to do this, this, and this? Or do I want the teacher, you know, principal to first ask, hey, how do you, how do you think, you know, you should resolve this? Um um and then, you know, if if the teacher asks for help, certainly I want to lean in and try to provide it, but. But really, like, if we're trying to build the capacity of our teachers, like, we don't treat them like they're idiots and incompetent, like. We help them identify, hey, look, here's what the data says, got it, so, you know, you're you're the expert, you know little AJ better than anybody else does. Like, oh, what do you think needs to happen here, you know, to support this? Um and then as a principal, you know, my role is to support them in implementing the strategies they've come up with. Um but to try to just override and tell the principal walking down the hall shouting orders at teachers, like, that's not what we want. Your way of creating that more healthy version of that interaction between principals and teachers is the model. Here's what, as supervisors, here's how we interact with our superintendent. You don't, you don't sit here and, you know, tell them, hey, a- all your ideas are bad. You should use this idea instead. Like, that just models all of the things you don't want to model. And so, so that's an important point, but the other point you made is huge, so it's worth noting. If you all hated children, this particular aspect of your job would be easier. I mean, the 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 challenge is, inside of your love for children. You'll unintentionally behave in ways that are, you know, helpful for that one child at the moment. Harmful for the larger set of children with less access to privilege uh in the long run. And so if you just hated kids, like, I'm not helping any of these kids, um um you, you actually avoid stepping on this particular landmine. The reality is, you love children so much, it's hard to pull back and look at, what is the big picture? What is the thing that I can do in my unique role that can do the most good for for all kids, not just for this one kid? Who's in a privileged privileged position because their parent happens to know a school board member. I mean, think of how few of your students are in that privileged position. Um and so you don't want to feed into a system that rewards privilege. Uh that that harms the larger set of students, um and. At at the benefit of you as individual, like an official, setting you up for your reelection bid. Like, but uh but the temptation, but it doesn't come from a nasty place, it comes from a place of really love and want to do right by that one individual child. But your role as board members will never be divorced from the reality that you all create culture with every action. And if you want to have a school system that honors all children, not just the one children with the greatest access to privilege. Then you're gonna have to, you know, manage yourself and figure out what is the way. In this moment to serve all children, not just the one directly in front of me. And and that's, and that's a hard calling. I mean, I'm I'm not suggesting it's easy, it's a really tough calling because it goes against how I feel in the moment. Um but that's, but that's what you signed up for. You literally raised your head and say, community, I'm willing to master my emotional response. In favor of the cultural response that our schoolchildren, that all of our children require. That's what you raised your hand to do. And this just gives you opportunity to practice, that's all. This is just practice, practice, practice. It's about continuous improvement. Uh anyone else before we uh before we call this quits?
AJ, could you just say that again? Mastering my emotional response?
Um um in pursuit of kind of the culture of continuous improvement that I'm gonna create. Yo, for all of my students.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you all for uh participating in the conversation the way that y'all did. And I think what was really critical in the last five minutes for me at least, was thinking about. In moments like AJ was describing, we feel like superheroes, but we're actually vigilantes. Seriously, because it's like, I feel like I'm saving this kid. But then that puts us in an awkward juxtaposition to the system of being combative. You see, for me at least, or the way that I'm thinking about it, because like Liza said. It's not allowing the educator, the principal, the system that we put in place to do its job. And instead of highlighting the inadequacy in the system and bringing it back so that it gets fixed for more children. It's actually doing the opposite in the fact that we, because of our love for children and because. We we feel like that would make us effective, solve the problem for individuals, and I know that I've been there. More times than I can count, and it's incredibly difficult to look back even just on my leadership. In my presence and what I brought to this space, and thinking there have been countless times where. And thinking there have been countless times where, because of what I have heard out in the community that a problem is not getting solved, that the hubris it must have taken for me to think that I can solve it. Like, Brandon has got this, I am the champion of District Seven, you know what I'm saying? And in order for us to be effective for this system, we have to be the champion for the entire system and not just the people who happen to have our cell phone number. Like, that is really difficult for me to wrap my mind around in this moment, and it's going to take practice. But I, I really am struggling with the idea of not being a vigilante in our own system. Not going out and taking the law into our own hands and trying to fix things as opposed to really looking at the system and seeing, why is this problem occurring and why hasn't it been addressed in the channels that we've set up?
Yeah, the idea of, are we going, and we can be downstream, trying to pull kids out of the water, we can the people have the unique task of going upstream and figuring out how are kids falling in the water in the first place. Like, that, that, that falls to y'all, it's, it's a tough job, it is a really, it's a really, really tough job. Um, and, and for me, eight years of it was emotionally brutal. Um, but also proud of what we got done for kids inside of, you know, the, the board that I served on, your, our team really buckled in and um, and, and did the work, um, and, and our children benefited from it. Uh, I, I want to just conclude, um, just expressing gratitude, like, because this is so hard work, the easy thing to do is just kind of lean back, you know, lean away from it, you know, kind of, you know, block it out. Um, but that's not what you all have done, over the past several months, you all have put in the work to bring us to this point. Now, you started by going through training, and then you did the arduous work of identifying a set of goals, a set of guardrails, really pushing back on your administration to try to identify some interim goals, interim guardrails that you could use to monitor. You've adopted those, and, um, and you said, this is what we're going to focus on, you've begun to redesign your board meetings, and now you're building the skill necessary to actively monitor progress, to really be clear about what is the reality for our students and, and how do we hold our superintendent accountable for having strategies in place that are sufficiently aggressive to meet the needs of our students who we've allowed to be left behind. Um, many boards have given up at this point in the journey, uh, you all have not, and for that, on behalf of the tens of thousands of students that you've served, many of whom look like me, um, thank you for your service. Uh, Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you very much, um, what a fruitful conversation, I mean, I just don't have words. Um, one thing before we get out of here, that I want, and please don't cut the recording yet, because I want to make sure that the public can see this. Uh, if everybody would take out their phones and take a look at their calendars for a second. Uh, one of the things as president that I would like us to do is spend some time together, and we will notice it. But I have a field trip suggestion for us, and I've talked to most of you about this, but Brother Delbert Richardson has an exhibit that is on display at this moment. We had originally talked about going on a Monday, but it's not open on Monday. And so what I would like folks to do is just take a look at your calendar for next week. Um, and the exhibit, I think, is open, let me see, I've got it right here. The exhibit hours are Tuesday through Saturday, ten AM to six. So I'm open to a Saturday, but I know folks have lives and I don't want to take too much from them. But I would like us to really consider what, what days would work for us to get over there and for it to be a meaningful experience. I think we would need at least an hour, so maybe five with the closing at six. And we would notice it, so anybody from the public is welcome to come walk around the exhibit with us. Um, but if we could take a look at the fourteenth, fifteenth, I am personally not available on the sixteenth, but even the seventeenth and the eighteenth are open for me of this month, and it's open till January the fifteenth, but I would like to probably get it done before we get out of here for the holidays. So a little description of it, I mean, you probably know it better than I do, but it's a collection of various art pieces, and for those of you who don't know, Delbert Richardson uh, helped, well, not helped, uh, essentially designed along with Jesse Higopian, our, our Black Studies Program with Dr. Scarlett. And uh, together they formed the Africana Institute, and he's done this a few times before. He's getting a lot of notoriety for it, but it is a collection of stories, lineage, understanding of history of African-American culture. And I think specifically as we're heading into Black History Month, um, in a, in a short while here. Yeah, yeah, in a short while here, I think it'll be critical for us to, to attend and get some of that, and I think it would be a great way for us to end the year. Um, if we could get out there before we jet for the holidays, so. Any preferences, any days that absolutely don't work?
The weekends, no.
The weekend will not work. The fourteenth or the fifteenth works. Does the fourteenth or fifteenth not work for someone? We have a board meeting on the fifteenth, so. On the fourteenth? They just changed the time too, didn't they? Four thirty to seven thirty, okay, maybe it does make more sense to look into. Don't worry about it, it's the transition team for Mayor Harold's uh, that's on the fourteenth. So let, let's go ahead and look into January, um, let's see. Can't do Friday, also, I could do Friday, but some folks can't. Um, the sixteenth, that's a Thursday, I am not available on the sixteenth, that's my issue. Actually, 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 my thing doesn't start till six on the sixteenth, and it closes at six, so we could definitely, the sixteenth out for anyone?
At five thirty, yeah.
That's five thirty, okay, okay, let's, let's look into January, no worries at all. I mean, I'm here the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. No, not the twenty, not available, okay, that's fine, let's look at January. Um, what does, let's give people some time to get back, so what does the tenth look like, January tenth? We have a isolation policy discussion on the tenth. What about the eleventh then? Right, it wouldn't be, yeah, so it would be the eleventh, do we have anything on, you can do the eleven? Eleven? We have a levy meeting with South Ward, but I can miss that. Eleven, January eleven?
Yeah.
Look at God, okay, so January eleventh, how does four thirty sound to me there? Is that too early for folks? All right, January eleventh at four thirty, it is done, thank you so much, that was so easy. And hopefully, what I would like to do uh, is do these like, somewhat monthly. If it doesn't work one month, but there, there's just so many opportunities as things start to open back up, especially for our students and for us as a board, like, as we, again, as we're coming out of our holes, um, I think that it's going to be critical for us to spend time outside of this building together to build that understanding and reduce that fear, so. Thank you for humoring me, I will see y'all, obviously before this, but January the eleventh at four thirty, please mark that. Okay, cool.
Adjourn.
Say again?
You need to adjourn.
Yeah, I'm about to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Trust me, I'm trying to get out of here just as quickly as you. All right.
Want to say thank you, I just, this, it's, it was a transformative experience. Um, I, I saw you all come together. I feel absolutely uh, inspired to be able to support you in ways that are tangible so that you can be assured that the people on the shore are fine, you can be assured that it's fun to actually be in the balcony and watch us dance because we're doing such a good job, so. I, I really want to make sure that you all understand that this was fantastic and you all made it comfortable for me. Um, and I think anybody watching knows that we're on point, so I just wanted to say that, thank you.
I just can't remember the last time I laughed so much up here, especially with all of y'all. So like, let's continue this, this camaraderie, because I think that this is going to be critical for the, the massive amount of work we got coming at us, so. Without further ado, if there is no further business or anything else that would be good for the order, remember, stay focused on children, and this meeting is adjourned at seven twelve PM.